Okay, recording.
Okay, call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. And the Board of Selectmen's Office, April 12th, 2021. Meetings being conducted remotely under the regulations propagated by Governor Baker and his March 2020 emergency declaration. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are we being heard okay? Indicate. Yes, yes, okay. First item of the agenda is the meeting minutes. We have March 1st, 2021, regular meeting. Any corrections, amendments, comments? All in favor? March 8th, 2021, regular meeting.
Yeah, I disagree with this statement at the bottom of page. Certainly did not say that. I think I made the point that. The town manager is someone who runs the show.
I think so. I think the town manager would run.
That's what Tom, Tom managers.
Why don't you get the wood?
Made a point that I mean, the town manager is someone who runs the show in real important. If we have an administrator and the board is still in charge of this, two weeks too long.
Directions. Board of Selectmen, what helps me to March 29th, 2021? And the March 29th, 2021 executive. It should say, that should say executive minutes.
You and I talked about this. I still think that vacation carryover is not, I thought we were going to the five day with permission of the board. Similar to the handbook. Vacation carryover was discussed and was recommended to be consistent with.
So you see that. There's a select one to change the request, right? The salary should be, and then it says no vacation carryover. We're changing that to consistent with the employee handbook.
Also, the next line, that's not also not correct. We were going back to, we were trying to be consistent with the 50%. We were allowing the X, the overage to be bought out right now, bring them down to 100, and then that would be 50%.
So that 75 should be 50%. All right, the next item on our agenda is we have guests from abroad.
I am, thank you. From abroad, huh? That's but a long distance. There you go. So, good evening and thank you for putting us on the agenda. I know we, we gave shot notice for that. I'm joined tonight by Aaron Osborne, a Director of Finance and Human Resource, and Gina Roy, a Director of Student Services. I know that you received a letter from me, I think la- last week sometime. Just giving you some information about our summer school program. One of the things that we're really excited for this year is they're going to be offering a summer school program for our students. We're able to receive some funding for that and we are excited to be able to offer that for our students from both hands and will over him. One of the things that I'm, I'm coming forward with you tonight is just to give you some information about it. But one of the things, the most important things is that we are planning on using TWB as a site for having our summer school. I know that in the past when we were dealing, working with the Y program. You, you know, advise us in the future to make sure you kept, you informed of the usage of the building. TWB will just be one of our sites that will be providing a summer school program. The reason why we have selected TWB is for a number of different reasons. First, it's, it's a great building as we know. Great location right in the middle of both of our communities will help out with parent transportation as well as bus transportation. But also will give us the opportunity because one of the things that you're aware of is that we're back in person from K to five. As of April 5th, April 28th, we'll be back in middle school, five days a week in person. And I have a meeting with the commissioner coming up this week that will probably get a date for high school. So with that being said, we want to be able to, when we ran our summer school programs usually in our, our sites or other schools. If we put it at TWB as one of our sites, we can do that deep thorough cleaning that we want to do at our other schools. In getting them ready for when all of our students return back to Green Meadows, to Mile Tree and all of our other sites. So today we, we come forward and just giving you some information. I think one of the natural questions you'd ask me is how many rooms or what location we're going to use? We don't have any of that information just yet. We haven't started that process yet of notifying parents and students about a summer school program. But we didn't want you to hear about that we're using TWB as one of the sites without at least coming forward to select board first and making you aware of it. So I know I'm, I got my timeframe, but that's basically why we're here tonight and certainly available to answer any questions myself, Gina or Aaron.
You, you say that the program is going to be significantly larger and still best to program for the whole district, right? How many? Two to three times, how many would you predict would be at third, very just?
You know what? We, we just don't know yet. We haven't started that process yet. So we don't know. We got it. We got to speak with parents in meetings that take in place and giving information out. So we don't know. We're hoping that a large number of parents and students participate in this this summer. But also it's been a very difficult year and as people are getting vaccinated. You know, we're fearful that there are people might be taking their summer vacations and things that they didn't have the opportunity last year, but we don't have any answer to yet. I'm sorry.
And also the other thing you mentioned that at the Green Meadows, you can do some capital projects. Got a cost on those?
Did I mention capital projects for the summer? I said deep cleaning that will take place at Green Meadows and other sites while the kids are not in the building during the summer.
There are two projects and they're flooring projects more or less slated for Green Meadows. There is a leaking drain in one of the custodial closets. So it's a floor drain that goes down under the floor. It is, is definitely leaking. We're looking at the extent of the damage. But it could involve some jackhammering of the floors, a lot of noise, a lot of clutter. And obviously, when you're dealing with drains sort of like that, you're dealing with potential smells. We also have, we shared with your capital committee. A flooring project which is replacing some flooring tiles, some aging flooring tiles. You know, and that's really going to be up to sort of the capital committee to determine the scope and the magnitude. We were hoping to do at least. A little bit of that this year. We've got it scoped out for, I believe about five years. I don't have it in front of me. But to do the, the school, the rest of the school in sections. And that will impact traffic. It will create again noise, clutter and, you know, possible odors.
Gina, what kind of, what kind of programs are you putting in there?
So this year, we're going to be offering special education programs in addition to general ed programs. The general ed programs are going to be funded through our ESAR grant to provide students the opportunity to. Kind of make up for, for, for lost time this year. We're going to identify students based on need. By, by offering it to students who have been struggling this academic year. But it's going to be our normal special ed programs. We operate a moderate special needs program Tuesdays through Thursdays. And our intensive needs programs go Monday through, through Thursday. So we'll have three sub separate programs over at TWB and some classrooms over at Mile Tree.
And, and we'll be more than glad to come back to you when we get some definitive numbers for you if you'd like. Or even better yet, at the end of the summer, our program done, just giving you a recap as well too. Of what's taken place in, in the success that goes along with that as well too. We'd be more than glad to come back another time.
And provide the transportation?
Yes, we will.
For special and regular ed also.
So I'm going to let Aaron respond to the general ed question.
Um, we, yes, we can arrange for that. We're looking at, we're looking at, at that possibility right now.
And just please appreciate, we're just starting the process. Summer's coming sooner than we realized, right? And so we just wanted to be able to get.
June 21st every year. Comes June 21st every year.
It's June 17th this year, but who's counting? That's our last official day of school, but we, we're, we're, we just want to be in front of this and make sure that you're aware that we'll be using TWB as one of our sites for summer school.
As far as opening the schools in general, are all students, can you accommodate all the students who, if everybody came back, could you accommodate them now? Or, or already, are you able to accommodate them because some opt to continue at home?
So there, in answer to your question, keeping the three feet of distancing. I don't necessarily know if we'd be able to accommodate every single student, making sure that we keep the three feet, but it's really. It's not just the, the three feet, it's also the transportation. Myrielledon, that's a piece that we really have to look into. But right now for this year, parents have the opportunity to have the remote for remainder of this year. That will not be an option for next year. So back when we start school again in August, everyone will be back and we'll be able to fit everybody back.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Collins compensation study. What do you have to report?
Well, this is Bob's project. I just volunteered to be here. He's been very helpful. Criticism, that's all on him.
All right, go ahead. How does it work?
The steps, well, there's a. Two year chart and there ought to be a three year.
Yep, we, we went into the, the, the data collection under the assumption that. The final column study, the grades were as specified in the column study. And that the rate, the pay rate chart was as specified in the column study, that those have already been accepted, my understanding. The Collins gave us no criteria for establishing steps. And so we talked about it and basically seniority or length of service was about the only objective standard we could come up with. There are 12 steps. So the first thing we said is, okay, you're going to, you started one and you're going to step every two years. Makes sense. It takes you 25, 24 years to get there. And that was what the first chart was that came up and that one has. That one has an incremental cost of, as he puts on his glasses, eighty, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Then the second chart was, okay, maybe that is too generous. What if we just, we started step one and do a step every three years? And so that's what the second chart was. It's a separate scenario. I'm not, you know, if that's a policy decision, it's above my pay grade, so to speak, but that one would cost fifty-nine thousand dollars in incremental cost. This is also operating under the assumption that the few employees that the recommended is lower than the current would stay at the current. Rather than take a pay cut. So that's where we came up with these numbers. You know, the. The only thing about the three year one is, it is kind of crazy in that. Even someone, the only person who managed to make it to the top level was someone who started working here in nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah, the other thing is if you start, if you're using the three year interval. And you start typically retirement at 80% in Massachusetts. Is a combination of chronological age, number of years of service, adding up to ninety-seven. So standard would be sixty-five plus thirty-two. You wouldn't get to the third step until thirty-six. So, I mean, that, that's a complication.
And does this factor, so? Is this, is there, is there a? Cost of living and then the step, step because living?
This, these, that the pay scale chart in the Collins report is based on this year's pays. So yeah, there probably has to be a discussion of a cost of living increase as well. A couple of.
So if you put everyone on a place on the chart, it comes up to eighty-five thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Without like a two percent or.
Two percent steps between the, two percent change between the steps.
Well, no, that's, that's, yeah, that's something, but as far as cost of living goes, each. Each one percent co- cost of living increase would be around ten to eleven thousand dollars. And, you know, when we didn't, when the system was broken in the past, we just gave everybody two and a half. But to give you a little, couple of data points on cost of living. The CPA from February to February was 1.7%. And the, we've had discussion about fifteen dollar minimum wages. And we, we, we will not be legally required to do that next year, but we will the year after. One thing that I found rather interesting, if we get a one and a half coal per two years in a row, the bottom pay would be fifteen bucks. This kind of an interesting coincidence.
So on this particular, on the, so on the two year chart would work this way. Let me just get this straight, all right? Everyone's on a step. Next year, they would get a potential cost of living.
Well, any year they might get a.
And then the second year, they'd move up to a step.
They move a step and a step is about two percent.
So if you were, then you would have the option of adding a small cost of living on top of the step. If you wanted to give everyone, let's say a three percent increase.
Yeah, so with, with, with the, with the primary chart there, every, every two years, they would get a two percent bump. Theory, they're more experienced and more valuable.
Okay, and so on this particular one, and all, on these, everyone who, if they were above the, the median. They stayed the same.
Exactly right. There's not a lot of those.
And I see some of the people. Did, you know, did pretty well because they were really out of the ballpark.
A couple did very, very well. You know, the library, the city director. Apparently, we've been getting a heck of a bargain for a long time. You know, the, obviously, it's the, it's the Board of Selectmen's. Authority with no question as far as establishing a step system. As far as the coal, I don't know. Is that, do you think that is, is in concert with the advisory or you think you recommended them and they? Either argue against or accept your recommendation. I don't know the politics of that one. Or the procedure.
Usually it's always been in coordination. There's never really been a need.
Technically, assuming that we know what we're doing at the end of this meeting, advisory is posted for Wednesday. So and I'll be happy to go over this with them. We're going to go to that one also.
What's the, what's the? What's the average percentage of an increase?
Going to the step system? Well, let's see now. I guess that the, we're talking a total payroll of. Nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and it's going up eighty-five. So. I guess if you wanted to take a, an average, it would what be in eight percent, something like that. But, you know, there's some big winners there. And so they, I don't know, is the average is really very fair.
Yeah, no, I just.
Mean or the median, you'd see a huge differential there.
Yeah, exactly. I didn't do the math on the media. You know, the, assuming you have the same chart that I have here, the one that's labeled. Yeah, cost for fifty-two point two weeks. You know, that's the annual impact on each of those positions.
Do we afford it?
Yes, of course. And of course, you're balancing, you know, employee morale and productivity versus, you know, the dollars you're spending. So I'm, you know, it, I think it will. Okay, and I would hear fromethanol, but now you're asking opinion. I think having an objective standard is going to help. You know, I mean, that's why we paid Colin, so they'd come up with an objective standard. And the one thing that we have to devise that they didn't do. We're, what we're talking about recommending is a fairly simple mathematical way of doing it.
Well, I, I think, I think it's not always the fourth thing, but I think it's whether, whether you can sell it to the town that, that this is a abuse of their taxpayer dollars. And when, when they're in a, in a mood that it's not. But I think it's absolutely, it's, it's. It's, it's. The, the fact that it's been, been. Ident- has been defined so well and that it's so objective and that it is, are definitely positive. It's data driven and so, you know, you can't fight with the. I love the, so, and this is it. And if you go through the whole process and then you don't go with the end, then you really have, you wasted your effort going through the whole process, it seems to me. So you sort of have to buy into the end, even though it is, it is a steep bite, I think.
This will put the town roughly in the middle of the market and make us competitive in the region. For new hires.
Is this, is this going to serve us for 12 years?
I don't see why not.
I don't see why not. No, you're going to be moving the steps up.
The, the only way a grade would change is if the job description changed.
Significantly.
And either you would have either the HR person or the. Or the, or go back to the consultant to have them reconsider that. Other than that. You know, we, we've been, how long since we did Tabor? That's been. Fifteen, twenty years, you know? And so, and it only fell apart really the last five.
If you don't stand up, I think it was oh seven, oh eight, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Certainly before my time. I know Donna was in the job when I did it. So that's, yeah, that's two predecessors.
And one of the benefits of it certainly is that people can predict where they're going to be. So that, you know, any of this topic doesn't come up all the time of, well, what should we do now? Should we, you know? And I think that makes for a happier town worker and. Right, makes things, it smooths things out.
You're, you're not politicking.
I think you look at the past couple of years, we've had good success with presenting a well argued, well reasoned approach for equitable pay raises. And it really wasn't a lot of negative discussions anytime we brought that forth. I mean, I'd recommend that we bring this to advisory, make sure that we're all on the same page together. It'd be good if the whole financial leadership. Group went to town meeting all behind this. Like you say, you are Dick, advisory also reason, we're all present. Look, we all looked it over.
We're, we're talking to, to two years.
That is the, I think that's a logical one unless you're terrified by the price.
And I'm not.
One of the loose ends that Dick and I have discussed. Is finding a way to reward certification. I mean, the town has an interest in seeing those employees who can be certified. Attending the classes and becoming certified and, and basically having that skill.
Anytime in the past, it was always able to go back to personnel and say, I've achieved something I need to, I should be rewarded.
Now you're not objective anymore.
I think, I think rather than that, we have to have a stipend that is given, it seems to me, like a thousand dollars or whatever that figure would be.
There, there is.
That would allow you to, to.
You know, I mean, I'm certified, so this would benefit me. But the problem is that less than half of the people in the building have that opportunity. Right, so that's, you know, I mean, the assessors have it, the town clerk has it, the tax collector, the treasurer has it. But a lot of these jobs, there is no way to earn that extra money. So I'm. That makes me a little bit uneasy.
Well, they could certainly go for degrees or they go for training in, you know.
But how do you? How do you value the reward? Did that reward for that objectively?
Well, you have to define it now. You have to say for every three credit course, did you, or fifty, if you would sue fifteen credits, then you get into a whole nother issue of the.
Is that what got the Mass Teachers Association in trouble?
I think it did.
Well, there is state enabling legislation, which if adopted by town meeting, would give those who are certified a thousand dollar bump annually. I should say annually.
But that would be only a certain.
But it does recognize that those who do become certified. Like in the case of treasurers, you have to go for two years, correct? Years of classes?
Three years minimum.
Three years.
And you have to have a certain amount of work service and you have to pass the test and so forth. So.
Only a certain, although only a certain number of people are eligible to do that. That's, that's how society works. I mean, I don't get paid what a doctor gets paid. So, you know, but I'm invaluable. So, you know, I think that if you have the opportunity, not everybody goes for it.
Does the town have to accept that?
The town, town meeting has to accept the enabling legislation and it has not at this point.
So it's an arrow in your quiver. You don't have to take it, but I think it's worthwhile accepting. So we have the option of. I'd recommend maybe we add it to the warrant since we haven't closed. Have Bob research it and hold, put a placeholder in.
I can do that. Maybe. I wonder if it's considering we're, we're getting a decent salary bump this year. If this is the right year to put it on the warrant. It's like all coming down at once.
No, I didn't say we don't implement it, but it's, we have many acceptances we've done over the past.
People that have to know how to do that. So. Okay, so what, what, what would, what would a motion be? Would a motion be to recommend it to the advisory or just to adopt it?
My sense would be that the selectmen adopted and recommended.
Have the discussion with them first and then.
The only thing is we're running out of time, Joe.
Terribly out of time and we have. Terribly out of time and we have uh.
Advisory hearing is what is it? Three weeks or two weeks from now?
So it's just an Excel sheet.
Okay, there's there's some more maps.
I I can I can we adopt him before we do the advisory committee because it's our responsibility.
Before you vote, I want to bring, there was a couple of interesting cases. Uh that don't have to be acted on now, but I want you to be aware of it. People who the recommended was considerably lower. And when I started to think about why that was, one was the principal assessor. Well. The principal assessor was hired based on experience in another town. And I would I could see a scenario where if you hired an experienced qualified person in the job, you might start them higher than step one. So that might be something to think about how to do that in the future. The other one was the building inspector and my question. In there is, is there a is the education and certification worth something in the step system there? And I think that's something for a future discussion for the board. Those are the two that really stuck out to me.
Well, towns often give a credit to someone who's coming in as a lateral. For uh years of experience, for for vacation, for example, you know, if I. We're we're in another town, I was getting three weeks typically in the new town, they would they would recognize.
And normally, I think that would only happen at time of hire. Yeah, but because we're implementing a new system and those were the positions that kind of stood out in my mind as something you you probably wanna dig into.
Okay, so I I mentioned the building inspector, but. Under the current is one thing and the recommended is.
There well, if anybody who the recommended was lower, we just kept them at the same level, they'd get a cost of living, but assuming you implemented, but they wouldn't. Uh you know, they wouldn't go, it would go down to the recommended. Eventually, their steps would move up and they would catch up with the chart.
Also, it would be a good idea to change the title of the building inspector to what he really is, which is the building commissioner. In other words, he has been certified as a building commissioner.
You've already done a job description based on what he does. I'm not sure how much the title changes, but.
It might mean a different, might have been a different classification from Collins. I mean, those are two different roles with different.
Right.
His description that he submitted.
I mean, he you hired as a building inspector, but then he did. And and well, took the exam.
And again, that's not not something that has to happen tonight, so maybe as you discuss that, you go back and look at the job description and make sure it's appropriate. You know, we have all those job descriptions, they're all zip off.
But if you like a motion to recommend adaptation of the two step. Uh proposal from Collins and the town administrator.
Any further discussion? Hold on a favor, alright.
Make sure we forward this to.
I'll send the data to them in the morning. Um do you want to um hold off any discussion on cola until Wednesday night?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, I will I'll send that to them in the morning and so they got time to digest.
Great, thank you.
Make a sure for saying.
Carry on.
Oh, I do.
Alright, the tip project at Allen East Long Meadow, et cetera.
This is a resident of the town asked to have an opportunity to speak to the board about. A proposal for a tip project. Um we've discussed this before, Ford felt that the. Uh the cost of design was probably not something that the the town should undertake. Uh in two thousand twenty. Dave Henry, is he on?
Just to tell about the gallery. Have to tell without the gallery viewer.
David.
Unmute that David, too. Can't do it there.
I've asked him.
David, are you there?
Okay. Transfer station budget.
Uh you should have a copy of it.
The bags, where do we get?
Are off budget. First of all, the transfer station budget is off budget and the bags are off the transfer station budget.
No, they're not. It's the enterprise fund. The transfer station budget is the enterprise fund and sometimes we do an appropriation because we need additional money.
She bought bags this year, right?
Yeah, so the article would include.
He's gonna buy.
Retained earnings, so much from appropriation.
Well, when I asked, is Jane on the call? I asked her about. She told me that she we need to buy bags.
I did not buy bags this year.
Alright, it was the year before, Don, you are, yeah.
Then we just when we put it, we asked for a bid, right? Didn't we get a bid on them?
Yeah, you wanted a quote so that going ahead, I would have a cost for. So that's what I did.
Okay, alright, so where does it come out of? Does it go into this budget or is it?
Yes, it comes goes into that budget, but Cliff always says, don't worry about it. We. John, help me out here. You are you and Cliff talk this talk.
Basically, we have a motion on the agenda for the enterprise fund, but enterprise fund for the transfer station. And it's uh typically say seventy five thousand or this twenty five thousand per salary. Sometimes, if you don't have retained earnings, you have to ask for an appropriation to get the bag costs, which we do. Uh maybe every two, three years, we get the value of large or small or something like that.
Yeah, about every two years.
This was the year there was a bit of a recap because they had the new contract. As Jane said, you really don't have all your revenue yet because, you know, June or May and June are big.
So the so the question is, we we can go forward, though, what we wanted to do is go forward with not using any, not having a raise inappropriate. We just wanted to do the retained earnings. What?
No.
Raise an appropriate, you you contribute from the general fund twenty five thousand for the transfer station.
We only contribute from if we are running short, like sticker, selling up, or we're gonna buy bags, which typically. That would help me out there, maybe twelve, thirteen dollars, yeah, something like that. And if we don't have retained enough to take care of it, that's when you have to do a little raise and appropriate and kick that in.
Right, so last year, what we did, we did. Eighty thousand and ten thousand for retained earnings, something like that.
Something, it was just almost a wash at that.
In the operating budget, in the green sheet. There's a twenty five thousand dollar appropriation.
The transportation monitoring, all the well.
That's the that's the uh. There that's a different thing.
Okay.
Alright, we don't have to finish this.
But anyway, one of the things that was done, we did move. The three employees to fifteen dollars. And the person at the top.
Yeah, that's a good joke.
It is.
So that gets into, you know, when we do see the budget, is there gonna be a need for maybe a bag car? We didn't increase, did we do an increase on the cost of the bag just to cover? Going to McNamara, so speaking, the Murph cost, well, the Murph was the worst.
Right.
So I have the numbers for bags for next year. And you want that added into this document.
Well, I want I'd like to know what our retained earnings are gonna be.
Right.
Okay.
Maybe Cliff could tell us that.
And you may not know until the close of the year, and that's the bag sales in June, unfortunately.
Well, maybe you can tell the reason we have now.
You need if you need twenty thousand dollars.
With the increased uh salary cost, and that's why I was asking. You know, with the recap of the Murph and the McNamara contract, are we holding to our projections into what we appropriate? Another thing is could be, is this because it's the first year of the contract, we really don't have history to work with here? Can we, so to speak, do an enterprise article and then perhaps correct it in the fall if we need to do? You know, because again, it's a learning, this is the first year we don't really have history to work with, so that's a possibility, so. I think Bob makes a good point about the transfer thing. We always have money left over because.
We never.
Worst case for testing and you never know, DB might say, oh, I want to test for something, and that's why you always see that big number left over.
By the way, I I think you do see that both the new Murph expense and the McNamara expense are as.
James doing the dishes.
I believe that right now we're at about thirty five, yes, I'm doing. Thirty five uh thousand dollars in in sales and stuff, and we haven't even started our our permit sales.
You think we have thirty five thousand returned to me?
And sales.
In revenue right now, yeah.
Alright, okay, thanks, Jane.
You're welcome.
Get those dishes done, huh? And don't forget to sweep under the table.
I gotta go.
On the operating budget, there is one piece of new information.
Yes.
The twenty four thousand dollars is not in the budget according to Carol. But that has to be brought in for the discussion. For the town.
But but we we may save sixteen thousand dollars of it for the lease of the council. So I as a chief checking on that before Wednesday to see where how that will happen.
Chief wants to retain one. But there will be a savings.
And I still don't know where they got the sixty thousand from. Because they have sixty thousand three hundred and sixty three. The communications for the police is thirty five thousand. I checked with the fire chief, he said the only cost we have is twelve hundred dollars there. So even if you add the thirty five and one is thirty six and twenty four for the thing is sixty less sixteen for the council. So there's some numbers there that are gonna change, they're gonna go down. Alright, what else we got on the budget? So we're gonna do, we did the salary thing, so we'll do that Wednesday night.
Right.
Um the the uh transfer station. Uh can I help anything?
Uh well, we we have um a warrant article. We have a low bid of twelve thousand and change. Uh I did talk with one of the members of the board of selectmen today who was nervous about taking that bid.
That would be me.
I agree with you.
That's a big, no, that's, yeah.
We do have.
By the same token, I read your, I read your, I read your recommendations.
Yeah.
Which were terrific.
Good recommendations and we have the state bidding law here. Yeah, in the packet, I I. References.
Especially since historical is kicking in ten thousand, they should have a bit of a, obviously, they got quite a bit invested here. The upper bid was twenty.
Twenty twenty three, I believe.
You know, just telling paint our company and stuff like that. At twelve is a pretty low number to do a full scrape scrape, uh you know, it's just.
Let removal, let painting.
I have a question that Hobie and I were, Wendell and I were talking about today, you know, some of the. Sighing has to be replaced and some of that wood has been destroyed with, I don't think it's termite, but just.
Well, we did when we did our walk around with Linda, Hobie and Mark, we did see that the lower. Maybe two feet, remember when we did the drain spout then and the gutter replacement? Some of the bottom wood had been splashed down so much it had been replaced. And then, like I say, Wendell and Mark had pointed out some boards up there that needed replacing. That's why I think the upper price. They had accommodation for that. Yeah, I would say we don't have to lock down pressure. We have the number, we have the thing in there, we have the placeholder. As you said, we are getting close to town meeting time, but I'd like that time minister do just a little more.
Yeah, i- if if the uh historical society is paying ten thousand, where would our warrant article be for twelve?
We don't need a warrant article because it's just a couple thousand. Find that in the.
If we went that way.
You could take it out of basically the four thousand operating for, well.
But if we say we end up saying, look at. We're we feel safer with the twenty three thousand because lead removal, all that kind of stuff, would the warrant article just be for the thirteen thousand? We would have to do the whole twenty three.
That's actually a good question for a different club, you know, because of the expenditure. First off, would they be writing the check to the painter or writing it to the town?
Little contract with the town, we'd have.
Contracts with the town, so we would have to pay the.
But again, we wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the tax rate because the re- at the time of the recap, you would have gotten the ten back from them, so technically. You're only taxing for the differential.
But that ten may very well have to go into. Uh the general fund and and flush out the free cash next year.
Right, but again, same thing, it'll be recapped at that point, if and actually, if you get them to write the check before June thirtieth, it's in free cash, no, it's in.
That's right, so if we get if we get to ten thousand before June thirtieth.
It's against free cash.
Does the person who bid twelve thousand dollars know that we have another bid for twenty three?
No.
And with a discussion as to what, why, why is there that difference? Be more illuminating.
Well, I I made a note to myself, I'm gonna get back into this and talk talk about them again.
Right, yeah, because it's that's such a significant difference. If it was a couple thousand, you'd say, well, you know, but. Um that is a significant difference.
I I looked at the bids carefully. It looked very similar to me, both using Sherwin-Williams paint, for example.
Is is this a is this a retired person or or?
No.
Or young, starting person?
Young, I would say maybe uh not that long into business.
Yeah, so maybe he's doing it to build to do.
I asked him, you know, because of um. You know, the state's requirements for minimum wage, I mean, for for prevailing wage. I asked him, uh are you a company or a single person? He said, I'm a company. So we gotta pay him prevailing wage. Same is true with the other contractor. So I. I was shocked, and that's why I sat down, I sat down with the bid and went through it carefully to figure out where is he cutting cores.
What is the difference? Why is one so double the other?
This bid is for scraping. Priming the bare spots and two coats.
As high as he can reach, he's only six.
And also measures to control us, measures to control the lead paint during the scraping. Yes.
Well. You don't always have to pay more to get the job done, but but you do wanna know that the people that are gonna do it at twelve thousand are gonna get the job.
With the we have to bring a number to the advisory hearing, that's that's our drop date for that.
I've been walked around the building several times and looked at it. Whatever restoration the town wants to do with the building, you need to get a coat of paint on there to prevent more of the cloud boards from.
Right, uh restaurant outdoor service.
Uh we have Laurie and I did talk with the building inspector today. He was. Talking earlier to me about the lecocina uh issue. Uh but really, this is an appropriate matter for the health department. And so Laurie is going to be on here to answer any questions. Um in general, there's a six foot. Um, in general, there's a six-foot requirement spacing, and other than that, you can have full capacity.
So is this similar to what we did, like the action we took last year in allowing outdoor seating?
Yes.
But now local control makes that call.
Yes, the governor said local control on that, selectmen control it. Uh, last year, you had more restrictive situation in terms of percentage of normal seating.
So we have three business.
Hi, I can explain a little bit, so, um, yeah, so now the governor has not put out an, an, a, a guidance that let's go out and, and have all our restaurants do outdoor seating if it's, if it's capable, if it's safe and all of that sort of stuff. What he has done is has taken it to the local authority, which in this case are the selectmen, to determine whether or not they want to allow the extended outdoor seating for a period of time on a temporary basis in order to accommodate, um, the restrictions that are currently in place. And part of, I think, why the governor has done that and made it a local thing is that the, um, the effort of, of allowing the restaurants to do outdoor seating was to allow them to accommodate for the restrictions of the indoor seating. So last year, as you know, we had like maybe, you know, forty percent could only be indoors, so then sixty percent could be outdoors. So now a restaurant can do, um, full capacity to the extent that they have to do six feet between tables. And then at the bar, and, and there's, we'll talk about the bar in a minute, but, and, and as far as the bar, the seating at the bars, um, the, and depending on the way the restaurant provides the appropriate seating that allows them to be in compliance with the, um, the requirements. Um, the purpose of the outdoor seating is to extend it to the extent that it accommodates the full capacity of that restaurant. So let's just take an example, if a restaurant has a hundred percent, a hundred people for seating capacity, and because of the restrictions of the six feet between tables and however they accommodate their bar, they can now do eighty people indoors, now they can only extend twenty people outdoors. So the outdoor capacity isn't to accommodate a, a fuller extent than what the indoor capacity is allowed. So as we move forward, I think part of what the selectmen need to do is to determine, is to say, okay, we'll allow outdoor seating to the capacity that you can, we have a number of what the indoor, what you can do indoors under this restriction that we have now, and then we'll give you those many seats outdoors. And so that's kind of where I, I've talked, I've spoken with Wendell, um, over the past couple of days regarding this. And it has, and not only is it the outdoor seating capacity, but also allowing the outdoor alcohol. So you, so the selectmen are giving the, are allowing not only the capacity for seating, but also for alcohol to be served outside of the capacity of the restaurant, like you did last year under the governor's requirements.
We keep the maximum number, if restaurant A was allowed to serve a hundred and twenty people, but they can only fit eighty inside, they can shift forty outside, but they still can't go over a hundred and twenty.
Correct. And that's how it was supposed to be last year, and we, we weren't really like so honed in on those numbers because restaurants were closed for a while, and then it was minimal capacity indoor. And, you know, we were in to make sure that our restaurants can survive, and, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, they, they can, they can make it, keep their businesses going. Um, the last thing we want to do, and even in, in this capacity, is to restrict them to an extent that it's gonna hurt them, but I think, you know, as, as we move forward, um, I just wanna make sure that the restaurants understand that this is a temporary. If you guys, if, if the selectmen decide to do this, it is a temporary extension of allowing the outdoor seating and the outdoor alcohol. Um, and it's temporary, so whatever, you know, so say if the governor says in August, okay, we're back to a hundred percent indoor seating for restaurants, well then boom, the outdoor seating no longer exists because we, you can now run your business as you did prior to COVID. So I just wanna make sure that, that restaurants understand that, um, that capacity issue.
You see any, um, anything going down the pike, have they talked about any potential timeframe or it's still so up in the air?
Yeah, no, they, they don't tell us any, we, we know as much as you do day to day as. The other thing too, as you guys are, are speaking tonight, um, and I might, I may have misspoken to, um, La Cucino's this past weekend because, um, the, the chef there did call me asking about, um, outdoor entertainment. And he said he had one guy that was going to sing and play the guitar or whatever it was, and I said, okay, that, that seems okay. Um, but then after I said that, I realized this morning that I think in order to have music outdoors, it requires a special permit for, um, outdoor entertainment. So I just wanna put that out there to the selectmen as well, so that, you know, we don't have other bars and restaurants having entertainment outdoors for any type of, um.
The special permit, we've modified entertainment licenses. I can recall Casabella wanting, you know, like Wednesday night or something like that, we were, we had to be more there because they residential right across the street, we were a little. You know, rather than business district. Now you'd have La Cucino serenading the guy in the barber shop, and he might appreciate that, I'm not sure.
I told Bob that the entertainment licenses were not brought up at the end of the year as they typically are because things were in such flux, that rather than send something out, we needed, you needed to have a conversation to determine what it was even gonna look like before people just started.
Wendell, you have it, Dad?
No, that's exactly, Reese here, cuz it's mostly under her jurisdiction and under the purview of the select board. I just kind of try to keep the right direction through the process.
I heard from Lori was, and this is only during the governor's emergency, anybody who wants to do something permanent has to go through the town regulations, building inspector, planning boards, site thing, the whole thing.
Exactly.
While the, we have authority to allow them to mitigate the distancing problems like we did last year, and that's the authority the town has, correct, Lori?
Correct. And it's, so it's not, it's not allowing a permanent outdoor seating capacity for, from here on in. Um, it's just a temporary, um, issuance from the selectmen saying, okay, we'll allow this to extend to the capacity of what you're allowed indoors to move outdoors. And at the same time, I think as, as far as, um, Wendell may be concerned in the fire department and, and whatever else, is that they do it to the extent that it, the safety is there, that the, um, ability that, you know, cars aren't gonna, you know, travel into that area where those people are sitting, um, so that it has to go again throughout the different departments to say, okay, I'm okay with this setup and this many seats, and that, that, that they're gonna be limited to whatever. You know, they get approved, not to give them a blank, say, okay, yeah, go ahead, enjoy your outdoor seating, but that it's gonna be something that is looked at at each department to say, okay, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. And then, um, we, we cover those bases just in the event that something happens, and it's like, well, you know, fire department said, well, I never got, you know, I never was informed that I can't get my trucks through here to get to this particular venue. So as long as we're able to do to that, do that same type of process that we did last year to have the different departments weigh in on what their extension is and how they're gonna set it up to make sure that we have both health and safety, um, looked at by everybody.
Our biggest concern last year, Don, if I recall, was Geo's because they were coming out of the parking lot, and what was the traveling? I think with Mountain View, the tent behind it wasn't really a concern, La Cucino off to the grass wasn't a concern. Geo's was the biggest one, was the.
And I forgot to ask Wendell after our meeting today, uh, when you left, I was thinking, do you inspect any structure that is erected, like a tent or a yurt or a igloo or?
Uh, my specialty is in yurts, uh, but all new construction tents have to be approved. You have to make sure they're ballasted down correctly, if they're gonna be cooking near them or having heaters in them, your department is involved. Um, they have to be certain amount of distance off property lines, there's a whole chapter of tent code.
Should we have every owner or restaurateur submit an application with a site plan like last year and ask for a special lesson? Okay, and then, like you said, to the governor's order.
All right. We're gonna have each, each, uh, owner of the business submit us a plan, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lori, thank you, Wendell.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We haven't seen like a.
Just one other thing is also if you guys can make sure that you discuss the outdoor entertainment in the event that a restaurant wants to bring a singer or a band or something outdoors, just so that you have that in your wheelhouse.
Okay, thank you.
We're going back to six thirty-five, fire department vehicle.
Fire department vehicle. Did I skip that?
No, it's just the, the time, sir.
I've added that to the, uh, it's on the warrant now. Uh, it is, um, approved by the capital planning committee, they voted last week, they supported.
Right.
So. Fifty-six thousand, what? Forty-four thousand. How much? Fifty-four?
Yeah.
That's after they turn in the other two things? That's everything.
Yeah.
Annual report update.
Well, we have all the reports.
Finally. I do say critically, Bob, that was a great report.
I am in the process of just getting page numbers on, calling the printer and getting it out.
Got the school, got the school and everything?
Craig, um, submitted one cover and then submitted a different one, I think we saw those. But, um, this has been removed because it's just one out of many, so.
The, because.
Because it's one church versus the other church.
I don't think anyone would care.
I don't know.
It's actually not the church part, it's the hall part.
All right. We skipped over town ministers contract. We're just signing that?
Yep.
Okay.
We make a change.
We make a change. Make the date, we remove the, uh. Health insurance. No, we can destroy it. We're gonna move the.
It says it's not eligible.
He is eligible. That's where we're gonna rule, you can't say he's not eligible.
The contracts supersede.
Stay law?
Well.
You just made way to gentleman's agreement, you said, I'm not gonna take it, we were fine with that, yeah.
Well, whatever, yeah, I, you know. Just take it out, we'll, we'll. I have. We should take it out and then we'll just sign it tomorrow. We can run down during the week.
Uh, I do think just for the year, you took out the twelve, put the year back in. The twelfth day of April.
Twenty twenty-one. Royal Day Parade?
I believe in a Lori has left, she wants to comment, but I think Lori made the point to me that, and Jane, that at this point, the governor is not allowing parades, and there doesn't seem to be any.
The VFW people.
As well, I'm sure they're just a limited, so I think our question would be whether or not we'd want a whole ceremony. And that's something we should work out with the VFW, and again, the concern there would be, how do you limit it? Okay, we'll have a ceremony, but it's in the open, so how do you stop people from walking up? Right. So, and how do you tell people you can't walk up for something so important? So I think it's just, it's a difficult thing. But again, I would say we officially should not have the parade, and we should canvas with the, uh, VFW about an observance.
Right. Uh, correspondent, highway construction project, oh, that's from, uh.
Fourteen dollars over, I'm not sure where that fourteen dollars is coming.
Even adjustment there. Grants.
Nice start, Bob, you can do better, get on it. More grants, more grants.
Backless reports.
Uh, same thing, we're still, we got another meeting, um, Friday, Wednesday night for the solar at the landfill. Um, capital planning, Bob kind of reported on that. Community preservation was pushed to this coming week because we weren't ready with, uh, the numbers coming in. That's a question really for our board as well. Are we going to ask for community preservation money for the cupola or wait for more of a clear idea of what we're doing with the building? I don't see a burning need to put the cupola back up on, we don't know yet, so.
Well, if you don't know how much money you're asking for, you can ask.
Well, that's I'm asking, no, what we're asking for, are we, I'm asking you as a board, are we willing to?
Spend money, put the cupola back up or wait and see what we're doing to building?
Well. I would, I would, I would put the cupola back up, I think, only because, um, it belongs there. And we don't even know how much it costs, it's been, it's been on the cost, I think, in my mind, and, um, I think that, uh.
They're talking about rebuilding the whole cupola, right? It's not worth restoration, according to, uh, person who took it down.
By the time you install it, put it up, I would be shocked and Wendell's still on here, but I would be not surprised if that restoring the cupola is in excess of twenty-five thousand.
Oh, well, then I think we should wait. No, I mean, you know, I would, for significant money, I would wait.
Significant money.
You know, with a couple thousand dollars, I said, just.
We can wait, the roof is secure.
Cause, yeah, yeah, don't you think?
So that's, uh, just report, the COA board meeting this month is canceled. And I think that's it for my board, so let's say we have planning on Wednesday, Bob. We have, uh, capital next week or tomorrow.
Next week, well, we're, we're juggling.
Juggling with our meeting here.
I, I'm moving the ambulance advisory committee to the following week.
Okay.
Cause I had tentatively scheduled it for next Tuesday.
Busy Tuesday.
It's gonna be a busy Tuesday, so next week, we're gonna have capital planning at five, selection at six, because of the holiday. We have planning Wednesday night, and that's gonna be a conflict for me because I've asked, I've been asked basically to operate the Zoom system.
All right, Bob's gonna do it, Bob's gonna be doing a training for different.
I'll be running up and down the stairs, uh, but, um, yes, I'm doing the training on Wednesday uh, for staff members so that, you know, they can run this operation.
Bob, should we get a second owl or something? Do you think, um, is it maybe double up on some equipment, have a spare?
Well, yeah, I, I agree, I, I, my thought was we would keep a system here, we'd keep the system upstairs. We just need a place to lock it up, so we don't park the stuff up and down again, like we've been doing.
Right.
Uh, we've talked about that, we've talked about, uh, how to secure, uh, a laptop and, uh, a microphone, and another owl, maybe, uh, that's all we need.
I had to say, my next question is, how much are these, and is it? Like you said, a lot of this, most definitely COVID. Like you said, a lot of this, most definitely COVID, so should every department basically be enabled to have their own meetings rather than saying, oh, I gotta go unlock it? Most of the departments have a laptop already.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you're saying each owl is a hundred dollars.
We can use care sack money for it, we've got two hundred thousand dollars, uh, unexpended. Uh, but still, uh.
It puts less on you, who didn't put it back in the locker, who didn't, uh, charge it right? And every board gets their own, you're responsible, if you break it, it comes out of your budget next time. I thi- I think that's a consideration right there, and less on you, Bob, you know, shift it over.
Right, uh. Wednesday, there were meeting with advisory, on administrative report.
Well, first of all, you should have an updated copy of the draft warrant, I've added. Uh, well, you know, the academy hall article was added, stormwater is on there, fire truck is on there. Uh, as a result of the meeting this morning, I've added a Scantic Valley Water District Expansion article. And underneath that, Town Water article, uh, and then, um. Those are the new ones, I, I'm not, I'm puzzled about what to do. Uh, about the, with the historic commission, we're not gonna go forward with an article. To appropriate money, uh, CPC money for the cupola, right?
We're not, well, we're not making an application to CPA this week on Friday, on Wednesday. We would not make an application to have them vote in favor of it, and I'm sensing the board does not want to go forward.
Right.
All right, so that's, I think this is the final warrant.
So this, I will say though, articles, Article Six, therefore, and I think I would share with you before, but we can get a copy from Doug. There are three articles, none of which are here, one, like I said, is the, uh, drainage fixing in Memorial Park. One is a request from historical, this is the meeting also ten last week, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's something about naming different properties in town as part of a historic, not district per se. But. Our board felt was worthy enough for Connie to get up and explain it to me. And the other one was the Hamden Housing Authority for the water fixing, uh, fixing water. Properties, so those are the three recommendations from community preservation at this point.
Okay, Article nineteen, Scantic Water District Expansion, is that we have to have an article to say they're gonna go.
You gotta.
Hook up two more houses.
Change the parameters.
Yeah, if you look at the map around the.
And then, then, then the pay for the system would be the next thing. Right.
Well, do we want to add one for that, while we talked about accepting provisions of, uh, what he was talking about? I forget what it was, no, it was the, um.
The incentive.
Incentive thing. I would.
The incentives become certified.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We were saying you had to accept some.
You have to accept enabling.
I, I know that, but it just happens. Maybe every three or four years, we always did a, except the MGL, blah, blah, blah. It's a question for Eva slash Rita. There's a question, do we keep a track of that? Obviously, they're in, uh, town meeting minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I did ask Dick and I thought he would know because he is certified and.
But as he said, it might have been before his time, he was the same, but is the board interested in my placeholder for that?
And, and I don't understand why you have to, why you have to accept it in order to do it.
The state is not imposing this on every town, the town has to agree to.
Well, what if we disagree to it anyways? I mean, what are we agreeing to from them?
Oh, you can do it separately if you wanted to.
We can just say, here's, we're, we're gonna give everybody who's done this, this amount of money, or anybody's taking, of course, we're gonna.
I'm just going by what Dick said, he said.
You have to get that approved to, it wouldn't seem to me, I don't know what the reason would be to get approved.
Well, if it gets approved, then the town would be obliged to pay a thousand dollars per year. To any of the municipal officials who can be certified.
Certified for what?
Collector.
Can you get a copy of that for us?
If we also in your report?
Yes, yes.
I, I just had a couple of questions, what, one was the, uh, the ventilation hookup at the, at the fire department, has that been done?
Hang on, are we done with the town report?
No, we're in motion to close it.
You need more to close.
That's it. Second.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
All right, ventilation, have we, has it been hooked up?
It has not been hooked up.
Okay, and what is the delay? And why can't we get that done? Don't we have an electrician in town that can come and do it, or get somebody that's just gonna do it?
Yeah.
I mean, if this, my, my concern is, it's more than, it's, it, it seems to me it's been here, but I don't, I can't get to the exact time it's been, but it's been certainly months. It was an emergency at the time, it was, it was, it was a safety hazard in an emergency, which is why we did it so quickly. And then it's not finished. I mean, I just think that's unacceptable.
I thought the, you know, if it was our meeting, capital meeting, Bob, or was it at this meeting last week? That we had a, a pretty good explanation from either Ed or Pat about the fact that they went, it was a older service. Et cetera, so.
Patrick's on there, you know, see if you can explain it.
So, and they had to go off for a couple of quotes.
Yeah.
For the quotes?
Open Patrick up.
And we got for the quotes, Bob?
He has gone out for a quote.
We don't have him back, I don't think.
Patrick is able.
Patrick, are you there?
Says he's connecting.
Okay.
This is the best name o- o- on the group, local Lois Lane.
That might be, is that? At least from, uh, the time, so, okay.
From, uh, Republican.
Republican.
Alright, so, well, we're waiting for Patrick to connect.
I'll run through a couple of things here, uh, you know about capital planning, uh, departments are coming up again, that's a standard thing. Uh, I'm, for now at least, gonna be involved with the planning board on Wednesday night. Uh, we're gonna be do the training on Wednesday, we've mentioned that before, the regional vets are meeting, we're gonna meet again. Uh, some question about leadership there. Uh, we met with the architect designer of the Highway Garage. Uh, we've applied for the small bridge program, I did, uh, tune in on the pre-hearing. Uh, for, uh, the change of the police union. I told them that the town did not have, uh, an interest in which union was certified. Uh, the question that we're gonna have to answer at the main hearing on May fifth is that will we agree? To allow reserve officers in the union, spoke to the chief about that and he's opposed. Uh, that with time bond. This morning, so talk about the water system, out of that conversation came the placeholder warrant article. On a Scantic District.
So, the, the police won't have a union, May fifteenth, have another hearing. Then there'll be a period of time with decision, so we'll have nothing, not even close, any idea for the town meeting with three of them.
We, I don't think we'll have any idea what kind of a contract. We're gonna have, or we, we may, I mean, let's assume that we get a decision by mid-May. Uh, it's conceivable that we can negotiate a contract. No, I, I'm sorry. I was thinking by the new fiscal year, but no, but it's by the town, meaning, no, no, no.
They get nothing, okay.
But here's, here's the thing, we're funding the salary line fully at the disposal level. So there's no question, there'll be enough money in the air to, it would just affect what we're changing to at the fall.
Right.
Rel- relative to time bond and the Scantic.
Hmm.
Water district, um. Are we saying that we're only gonna do two houses, or are we saying that we're gonna run the line all the way down Main Street in case more houses should surface? Does it not seem?
Political decision there.
Yeah, does it not seem like since we have, um, money available through grants? That we would run a line so that other people might use it and just not have to hook up now, but if anybody needed to hook up in the future. Um, they could do that at their expense, because the water would be there.
Well, that's the question, at their expense.
Well, I mean, well, if it was, if it was houses that were impacted by this situation, then we, we might have to be at our expense, but for other houses. Like, why couldn't we?
You can have stubs, there's more cost to that, you can do it. And we do have, we're, you know, it's certain now. Although we don't have the official regulations, that we can use, uh, Recovery Act or Rescue Act. Funds for this project. You can use it for infrastructure defined as water sewer and broadband. And so we can cover this cost entirely. From.
To go all the way down, or to go, not all the way down, but, you know, to go a longer period rather than just two houses, is that, is that?
Well, nobody's saying two houses. So, right now, we're looking at, uh, treating the four houses that are currently connected to, sorry, three houses. Plus the fourth we've agreed to that are connected to the highway department well.
Yeah, okay.
The potential is also connect the fire department because. The, and we had, uh, Craig Revest on the meeting as well as the chair of the Scantic Water Commission. The numbers that Time Bond presented show more than enough, as you made, a point, more than enough capacity to cover that. The issue, as you bring up, is do you stubble on the way and let anybody join to it? And the question is there is that? How do you really say that, you know, they have a water quality issue, that's the responsibility of the town? You can't just let them buy water from the town because there you're, you're creating a district and we're adding a district for remediation. Of a contamination issue, much like the district was created for the landfill. And these other ones, you'd be creating a district for, hey, just say, a water for sales, and then like an enterprise one.
But the fact, I mean, I, I, I would be concerned that we would be penny wise and pound foolish, if you're going to do it. You know, do a, a long run, it would seem to me that you put, would call hubs or stubs, you put the stubs in. And then never have to do anything with them, if you didn't want to do anything with them, but you wouldn't have to go through the whole process again. Of digging everything up and putting the stubs in, if you decided in five years or ten years, okay, we wanna run water. We wanna let, we wanna have anybody want, have access to that water.
But you're not having anybody, I actually.
Not right now, we are not.
No, no, you're not having anybody, any, you're picking out twenty homes on Main Street that you say, okay, we're gonna say you can have water. And the other eighteen hundred homes in town don't get any water.
And they're get, and they're, they're, you're getting water by virtue of the fact that they live near houses that have been contaminated.
But they're not contaminated, but they're not.
They're not, but they're not, but they're living near those houses, so we had to run right by your house, so.
I understand that, but you can't draw that district, but you can't, you, how do you make a third district? That sells, you're making a district because of this, the way the well is classified. It's supplying freshwater for contaminated wells.
Right.
Now you're saying I want to make a third district for the town to sell water to these homes.
Well, it may, it's, it may be more complicated than I understand, but it just seems to me that you don't, you don't run a thing that, that.
We had them, we had them quote that, I agree with you, but it's how do you do it and pick and choose, if you will.
If you do something like that, you're gonna have to add a betterment assessment, so that others in town don't complain that, uh. Basically, you've singled out just a few people.
And then you don't know, then you have to determine if the water supply is adequate for.
For five houses, or ten houses, or twenty houses, or whatever, whatever the number.
I said you have a hand up over here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the chair.
Hey, I just want to jump in for one second on that, um, that water concern. So currently, our district is allowed to supply up to fourteen thousand seven hundred gallons of water, um, per day. With that said, we, we have adequate supply to feed the, the concerned homes. The district is currently set up to serve the, the problem homes as the way it was written up in the act. Um, in creating a second district to remedy these four, four properties. Um, we would in turn be allowing them to add on to the district. Um, if we wanted to add those, um, those stubs on, according to the, the, the report here, that's an additional sixty thousand dollars. But they also mentioned that they'd have to create more cuts across the road to each of the stops, so you're not only. Adding those stubs, but you're creating more road digging across the lanes to any potential hookups. So you're gonna have that road concern of problems down the road, you know, winter times, frosty, stuff like that, that could. Create potential problems going forward with additional stubs. Um, currently, it's only run up to the four homes, if we wanted to run it down Main Street. There's an additional cost there that, you know, does apply more homes as part of the district. Um, the other thing is, we currently have four homes on the district that are paying customers. So how do we necessitate adding homes at, you know, the, the regulated water rate per estate? As opposed to giving out free water to the affected homes? Um, you know, there, there's a whole can of worms there that could be had by charging and not charging and running to. Paying clients that wanted to hook up, so that's, that's all I really wanted to add to that context there.
I would say that was very informative and, and, um, it makes me say, great, do it for the. Cause it does seem like a lot more, I mean, more complicated than it has to be.
Impact on road, take a ride down Maple Street in East Long Meadow. They did a huge project all along there, uh, last summer, the road is a mess, an absolute mess. Well, what happens is you have to patch it, and you have to get a chance to settle before you put a, a, another coat on, a finished coat, and so. It takes some time, I'm sure that's probably what they're doing, or maybe they're gonna do an overlay, but it's a mess right now.
Um, just to quickly go over the report, and I think maybe we, when, uh, Time Bond sends the final report, you'll see it. They investigated two options, one was to put treatment. Plants, if you will, at the affected homes, and one was to provide supply from Scenic Valley. The treatment option is cheaper. However, it's got, if you, and as your concern is, another home comes along. Expanding the water expansion from Scenic Valley is cheap. The, the, putting the treatment thing in with the required leaching basin, the whole bit, it's exponentially more expensive. And there's no end to it. Um, their recommendation was to go ahead with the expansion, cause, you know, it's pretty simple, once you bring the water down to the. What do you wanna call it, the DPW, the DPW salt area, whatever you wanna call it. To add another potentially affected area, much like the highway, is a length of pipe and nothing more than that. The biggest cost is going to be the three thousand feet coming from Laughing Brook down to basically past the town hall.
And if we add the fire station, you're gonna.
And then you gotta go maybe a few hundred feet up at a fire station. The cost is in the neighborhood of just over six hundred thousand dollars with contingency, et cetera. As Bob has said, that's fully covered by projected money coming in from the Rescue Act scope.
American Rescue Act.
American, American.
American.
American, thank you, American Rescue Act. I think logistically, and Don, you might know this, I think the town would have to vote to appropriate, uh, uh. Authorize the treasurer to borrow, et cetera. And Bob is looking into, is this one of the ones where you have to spend first and reimburse? Or is like over, they send you a check and, thanks for the check.
Yeah, it seems to be one of these standard state projects where you front the money and they reimburse you.
Now, something like that, if we're just fronting with a quick turnaround, it's minimal interest charge at that point.
Especially at today's interest rates.
Oh, yeah, Dixman did a great job of just, I mean, spending hundreds on borrowing hundreds of thousands.
So, so what is the timeline on this? Do we know when this will happen?
Well, we have to go town meeting and obviously get authorization to go ahead.
So would this be on the warrant for this?
On the update of the warrant.
On the update one, okay.
I just have to get the language. Legal language for the expansion.
And then once the warrant, once they approve the warrant, then the timeline, they would do it the summer or, you know, summer, fall kind of thing before winter or?
Well, I mean, obviously, uh, anything, anything approved town meeting is not technically in effect until July first, the start of the new fiscal year. One concern, as we talked about our meeting today, is just like with construction, this is gonna be part of that. Especially you see a big infrastructure money coming out there. You know.
There's gonna be a lot of competition. And by the way, there was an article in The Republican today about the rising cost of construction materials. Reinforcing exactly what we've been told.
The only other thing I will mention to the board that they know is that I talked to the resident, Noel, who said there's been some improvement at the house that she had concerns about. She's hoping that will continue. And so she's relatively, she says there's still area for improvement, but she's relatively.
And I did get a call from the manager today who said that they're committed to resolving this issue.
That's where we want to be.
Anything else coming for the board?
Oh, quickly on the highway department draft, are we gonna say, thank you for the first draft, please let's make it official and push ahead.